Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our board meeting tonight. I would like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic where we stand, one nation, under God.
Before we get going into the agenda, I would like to entertain a motion to use Director Boca Negra and Director Parsons. One's out of town and one is sick.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes of the Special Board of Directors meeting from Tuesday, May 23rd; minutes of Directors Workshop, June 1st and 2nd on coherent governance; minutes of a Special Board of Directors meeting, June 19th through the 13th, which were graduations; minutes of the Special Board of Directors meeting, Tuesday, June 13th, which was the public retirement celebration for Mr. Dieter; and minutes of a Special Board of Directors meeting, Monday, June 19th, which was the staff celebration for Mr. Dieter's retirement. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. These are proposals for action that are part of our general operating of the district. Do I have any discussion of the consent agenda?
I just have a sort of salutary comment to make about Item C, which is the inter-local agreement between us, Vancouver Public Schools, the City of Vancouver, and C-Trans about the expansion of the bus pass program. I like the idea of the Youth Opportunity Pass, and I'm glad to see that it's being expanded like that. But I noticed while reading the contract that a duty imposed as a responsibility on all four of these entities, us, and the city, and C-Trans, is a nondiscrimination clause, very similar to the one that, well, it sits in statute. I don't know if it's imposed on the city or the C-Trans organization the way it is on us. That no student should ever be treated differently, spoken to disrespectfully, or denied services on the basis of the protected classes that we have in law. I appreciate that that's in the contract where we can see it and find that that's a duty.
Yeah, and I'm excited about the expansion of that program because now it looks like they're expanding it to all middle school and high school students within our district and Vancouver Public Schools.
As long as the parent signs a permission slip for that to happen, yes.
Great.
Other than making that comment, all I wanted to do.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Due to remote interest in Microsoft stock, I need to recuse myself from Accounts Payable Warrant voucher number 336049. And due to a remote interest in Disney stock, I need to recuse myself from Accounts Payable Warrant voucher number 76311.
That's all of them?
Yes.
I think so.
That's it, Don.
And due to the circumstances of having two board members missing, which in 18 years I've never seen, so it kind of threw me, not have a quorum to vote on items-
Microsoft.
Just those two.
The Microsoft and the Disney. So those are going to be removed from the consent agenda and will be brought forward at our next board meeting. So with that, we approve of the consent agenda as amended.
With those two removals for those reasons, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Next up, we have proposals for action. We have a number of policies that are at the second reading stage. These are all policies that the board has workshopped and then have come to the board for first readings, and now we're on the final reading for approval of these or adoption of these policies. So the first one is Policy 6102, District Fundraising.
Okay, this one just basically has added, from the current policy, added the word "activities," and it used to say "district fundraising," now it says "district fundraising activities." And then it changes the terminology from parent-teacher-student associations to parent-teacher organizations or other nonprofit citizens organizations, or the associated student body has been added. And all this does is get us in compliance with the RCWs as it pertains to student fundraising, or district fundraising. So I would have not had any calls or any questions about this policy over the last three weeks, so I'm recommending that we approve it tonight.
Question or questions by the board?
I got clarification at the last meeting where this does not include the foundation activities.
No, this has nothing to do with that. Separate board, separate entity.
Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Okay. Adoption of Policy 6102.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Policy 6100, Revenues from Local, State, and Federal Sources.
Great, this is a policy that has had a significant amount of change, again, all to put us in compliance with the latest RCWs and the WACs. And it talks about revenues from discretionary local taxes, which would be levies, and it talks about revenues from state resources, which would be the funding that we get from the state legislature. And it also changed a little bit on making sure that we agree with the Title I requirements pertaining to implementation of internal controls for travel, contracted services, training, and capital outlay, purchases and expenditures for Title I. And it grants the authority to the staff to participate in the development of any state or federal regulations deemed to be necessary for the implementation of federally funded programs. So it really takes into account where we get all of our resources, state, federal, and local, and just outlines that they are to be used for the purposes that they were intended. They'll be audited and kept very close track of.
Any questions?
Again, I haven't had any questions over the last couple of weeks, so I'm recommending an approval of this, again, or updating of this tonight.
Sounds like this wouldn't really change our current practices. It just outlines it more definitively.
There's been a few little tweaks in the RCWs over the years, and it's just getting us compliance with all that. But we've done it all because we've been following the law, so it doesn't change any practice.
Just the comment, seeing this, how appreciative I feel of the community's support for our levies over the years. We've been very fortunate to have that passed. Other than that, no questions.
I'm fine.
Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Forward with a motion for adoption of Policy 6100.
Adopt Policy 6100.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we move to Policy 6114, Gifts or Donations.
Yes, this title has changed, the number has changed from 7260 to 6114 in compliance with the WASD numbering system. But it used to be called "Donations to the District," now it's called "Gifts or Donations." And it talks about, again, within the legal references of RCWs and WACs, it talks about once we recognize any donation or gift, the district, it becomes the property of the district and can be only accepted by board approval. So if somebody wants to make a big gift to the school district, it comes to you. But once they give it to us, then they don't have any control of it. It becomes property of the district. It also says, "The board will not authorize acceptance of gifts that are inappropriate, which may carry with them unsuitable conditions, which may obligate the district to future expenditures from the general fund, or which are out of proportion to the value of the gift. All gifts will become district property and will be accepted without obligation relative to use and/or disposal," which is really important because sometimes people want to give us stuff because they can get a tax deduction, and it's not something we need or would ever use. So we really need to have the ability to say thanks, but we don't have a need or a use for that. It also talks about money or additional supplies and equipment donated by booster clubs or other groups or patrons to support specific teams or extracurricular activities are not to result in unacceptable levels of disparity of allocation favoring one team, school, or gender. And that's really a Title IX compliance issue, and we've had plenty of practice on that. And then solicited gifts or donations to districts. Certified staff seeking donations for their classrooms, or staff and/or administrators seeking donations to benefit the entire school or the district as a whole must obtain prior approval from the superintendent or his designee, his/her designee. In no event will any commitment be made by staff member or other individuals in return for any gift to the district or to a school or department without the board's authorization. And that's really to make sure that we're not soliciting things that we really shouldn't be outdoing. And then gifts to staff. The board recognizes that students and parents may wish to express their appreciation to school staff by giving gifts. In recognition of the fact that not all families can afford to show their appreciation with gifts, the board discourages, excuse me, the board encourages, we've got to cross out through the disc, encourages the giving of letters of appreciation instead. So that's a tougher one for us to police, but it's certainly a philosophy we're trying to generate as part of our equity initiative. So I have not had any questions about this over the last couple of weeks, so I am going to recommend that we adopt it as presented.
I do appreciate that it does take into account the fact that some families may not have the ability to do that and to bear with their appreciation in their words instead of financially, and I appreciate that. Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Okay. Forward with a-
Need a motion for approval.
Move that we adopt Policy 6114.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, we're moving into some curriculum adoptions.
Again, these have all been workshopped, reviewed by the board, have gone through our normal instructional materials process, and vetted that way. Then there was a first reading at our last board meeting, and now we're in a second reading. So the first one up is the High School World History, U.S. History and Contemporary World Issues. This is a digital product. Oh, do we have someone here that is going to speak to this?
Well, I would ask Christopher Grue or Becky Katermas, whichever one has chosen to take that responsibility on. I think it's Becky. Becky is our Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
So the first one is a high school, as it says.
For the audience on this one, can you tell us the IMC, and who has the ability to look at this and give input?
Of course. So the process that we used to adopt curriculum is, first of all, we identified the needs. So we had our specialists out in the buildings, working with teachers, determining what materials we are lacking or need to update. Then they went through and found, the specialists select different materials to pilot with a variety of teachers at different grade levels and different courses. Pilots then give feedback through a curriculum review committee. The review committee makes a recommendation. That recommendation is then moved to what we call the IMC, or the Instructional Materials Committee. That committee is made up of district staff, superintendent's designee, it has teachers, principals, and parents on the committee. They meet multiple times, they review the process that the specialist has gone through. It is not a review of the actual product at that point, it is to ensure that we have followed all the steps of the curriculum review process in order to then recommend it move forward to the board. We came to the board for workshop on all of our different materials that we are recommending for the first reading and have walked through all of the materials in great detail. We've also shared access with the board so that they can go in and review the specifics of the materials. Because the majority of our curriculum is digital, it has been really nice. We just give them some logins and passwords, and they are able to do so from the leisure of their home or wherever they happen to be with a computer. Then we came back for a first reading to go through each of the different curriculum materials, and now we're here for a second reading.
I had a couple of comments. I mean, having the chance to take a look at the digital content, or at least some of it, I was really impressed with the history material because it seemed like it described different events, but it also worked really hard to give different viewpoints about that, and I really appreciated that. And I guess the second thing I really appreciated is you were able to summarize for us some of the costs involved versus what it's cost traditionally, and it seemed like being digital, it's like way, way lower costs than traditional materials.
Absolutely. We're really excited about that. It's also nice because as materials continue to improve and iterate, we're able to, we aren't stuck with one textbook that we will have to hold on to for multiple years. We can make some adjustments if we need to. We are in the process of creating a review process for our instructional materials. So next year, after we adopt, teachers will be continuously giving us feedback on how the materials are working.
And these, all of, well, I can only address this one at this time, but has good support for the teacher classroom.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I thought it looked-
I agree, no. I'm happy to see these kinds of things happening.
Well, you know, we waited a while for everything to kind of be in place, and I'm excited that we're ready to be back adopting materials again, so this is a good. Have any other comments or questions by the board, comments by John?
I really believe that the IMC and the curriculum folks have done a great job. This particular one has been piloted at three schools in 2015-16, and all schools in a supplemental basis at the high school level in 2016-17. So the teachers are very familiar with it and have used it, and I think it's one that will make a difference in the materials or help having kids access.
Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? For adoption of the High School World History, U.S. History and Contemporary World Issues.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we have AP Psychology. Always a fascinating subject.
Always. AP Psychology, it's awesome. We haven't adopted any new AP Psychology materials for more than 10 years, and since then, the AP Psychology test has changed. And quite honestly, many of the references within the book are no longer medically accurate, so the new book will address all of that. And it is also in a digital platform, so we have balance of the two, and we're excited about that. All of the AP teachers were excited about the material. It's a similar format, and it's used pretty much nationwide.
I like it.
I think that the field of psychology has advanced quite a lot in the last 15 years, just what people have been able to learn by having access to social media for their research in the first place and so forth. It's come into the conversation about the subject. And having a mutable online resource to teach kids about the current science, the basics don't change, I'm sure, but the details and the practical examples, that's going to really amplify what we can teach them.
Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Okay. For adoption of the AP Psychology, Meyer Psychology for AP.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the AP Human Geography, AP Edition.
Once again, this is a new AP, or it's an AP class that we have, and we are just updating our curriculum resources. It is digital, which is a great option for all of our students as we move forward to one-to-one. It is better aligned with the AP exam for HUGS, which is what the kids usually call it, and the teachers have all had an opportunity to work with it and are approving it.
Do we have any questions or comments by the audience?
I'll entertain a motion for adoption of AP Human Geography.
Do we adopt this AP Human Geography as presented?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Up is Spanish 1, 2, and 3.
So this is also digital. Our language programs are all hybrid, so we will have a hard copy and we will also have a digital version, so it meets everybody's needs that way. It is an updated resource for us, and our teachers have been using it and have found that it matches our philosophy and of instruction for language development in our students and have approved it.
Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Adopt Spanish 1, 2, and 3.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, if you're not into Spanish, we have French for you. And this is for French 1, 2, and 3.
Correct. And this resource is also a hybrid, and it is by the same publisher as Spanish 1, 2, 3. So as our language teachers were reviewing the different options, this was the one that they both selected and both sides of the language, so we were excited to see that.
I'll admit it, I didn't read it.
I don't know, is it pronounced "bien dit"? Is that, what does it mean?
Really, Rob?
I'm-
I'm counting on the teachers. They know what it says.
I'll have to ask my kids because they've taken these classes.
I trust them sincerely.
Good something. Good something. Sorry.
Okay.
My kids have all enjoyed their French classes. I'm glad to see we're supporting them.
My daughter loved it and served her well.
I-
Questions by the audience? Okay, we'll move forward with a motion to adopt French 1, 2, and 3.
I move that we adopt this curriculum for French 1, 2, and 3.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is K-8 Writing, Units of Study in Argumentative Information and Narrative Writing. This is a text document.
Yes, it is. It is a text set, and it's a teacher's resource. This is what we refer to in the district as Lucy Colkins material, and it is the units of study. It's K-8. It has been a grassroots effort as it has moved into the district, so we have it in the majority of our classrooms already, and now we are just finally going through the process to formally adopt. One of the pieces of the adoption that is really exciting is that we will have a vertical alignment of writing, scope, and sequence. So not only will it be across the grade bands, but it will be K-8. We will be using the same language, we will have in similar examples, so we will see some great progress as we move through.
No, I've heard really good things about it.
I know, I have too.
I've never heard anything except good things from principals talking about Lucy Colkins in the earlier grades when they were being introduced, elementary by elementary. So I have a lot of confidence that it'll serve all our kids.
Free. Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Adopt the K-8 Writing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have K-5 Math, EPS Math, and this is a digital option.
This is a work that has been going on for a couple of years in our district. We have been working as a curriculum team and also with district teachers to create a scope and sequence, K-5, that matches our district philosophy of workshop and math discourse built into a digital platform. So we have taken the curriculum that we have curated through a variety of different open resources and then created a platform that is teacher-facing and also student-facing that will go forward next year. We have piloted the program in several schools. Many schools have actually been using our online version now, and now it will be updated so that it will be even more student-friendly.
So this one's completely developed internally, right? So what is the process of updating?
It's an ongoing update. We have systems in place within our products that we get feedback from teachers on an individual lesson, or a scope and sequence, or a unit plan where they ask questions. It is not a lockstep, here you go through it like a textbook would be back in like my day. It is a unit plan, and then it gives a variety of workshops that would help teachers meet that goal or that objective by the end, and then assessments built in. The nice piece to this is our writers for this, the people who have helped curate from all these different areas, are homegrown, so they're available for us to continue to revise and improve as we go along.
Saying that these are our teachers and curriculum directors and administrators who have focused on this curriculum.
Yes, they have vetted all of the resources that we've pulled from different online opportunities. So it's not us sitting down and necessarily writing out every question set, but pulling a three act task from a Graham Fletcher, or illustrative math tasks that could be, that would match what we're trying to accomplish.
These are all open source materials that have been available, the soup of the internet-
Yes.
-that we've been able to pull together for something coherent.
Right, and we haven't used just one source. I think that's important to recognize. We have picked the best from all of the different areas and made it a cohesive experience for a student.
Really glad to hear it, and I'm really glad to see it because K-5 Math is so important for us to, I think, get better at, so I'm really glad to hear this.
I am too.
I think anything that can add joy to the idea of learning mathematics in those early years is going to really help kids.
A pretty powerful team that's-
I'm so proud of them, yeah.
...been working on it. And I know when I speak with people that have been involved in this, they really are proud of their work and feel like it gives them so much flexibility and creativity in the classroom because teaching is an art, and they are able to really pull what they need when they need it. And this is almost like a living source that can continue to be built on. I think that's really important in this day and age, so thank you. This one was hard work.
Yes, it was.
I appreciate all of you that participated in making this happen because I know it was a very intentional process that marked on on this one. Because no one math curriculum seemed to, every time we had a math curriculum, and I've been doing- been doing this long enough to have seen a couple of them, it was always like it works for this, but maybe not for that. And so then they're back filling in for other, I mean, this feels like it's going to be able to cover our bases when a teacher needs it for the kids that need it. And I really appreciate that a lot.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? For adoption of the K-5 Math, EPS Math.
I move that we adopt this curriculum for K-5 Math.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is 6-8 Math, Illustrative Math. This is digital.
So illustrative math is from Open Up Resource. It is a free resource that's online. We have been working directly with Open Up this year in order to pilot at, we have pilots at all of our middle schools. Some middle schools actually embraced it, 6-8. Others were at a given grade band. We have used some of the resources digitally already and once we have devices in kids' hands, we will, this will be a completely online resource for our 6-8 teachers.
In the studio classrooms this last year?
In some of the studio classrooms, in some other classrooms that were just really interested in the, so it was, it was a mix. One of the nice things about illustrative math is it is also embedded in our K-5 EPS Math. And so you will see some of the same tasks in the same language that then will transfer to middle, to the middle school. Been embedding it in OneNote and also in classrooms, so there'll be different ways teachers can maneuver through it.
Comments or questions by the audience? I'll take a motion to adopt the 6-8 Math.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Last but not least, K-8 Science STEM Scopes, and this is a digital.
Correct. It is, once again, K-8. It has been piloted at a variety of different schools. It has been embraced enough that I think James gets called on a regular basis to see if somebody will give them, give him, give them a password so they can use it too, which always is a good sign when you're running a pilot. The product is intended to increase inquiry with students and also build just general science knowledge.
Nice to have good supports for the NGSS curriculum. It's been coming online and I have the impression, talking to some science teachers, my sons, for example, that they're pretty excited to get this kind of support going into the next year.
Any comments or questions by the audience? Adoption of the K-8 Science.
Adopt this curriculum for K-8 Science.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
If you gotta vote or we're not having a forum.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, yeah.
I think you're off the hook until a little bit later, young lady. Okay.
Thanks, Beck.
Uh, next up, we have some policy development. These are policies that have been workshopped and are now coming forward to the board for a first reading and then after tonight, unless something happens otherwise where we want to hold it, they'll come back next, at our next board meeting for a second reading. First up, we have Policy 6212, Procurement Cards.
This is pretty exciting stuff, so pay attention.
Drink your coffee. We're into the fun stuff now.
It looks like this one shortens the previous policy.
It does. Basically, we have been encouraged by the State Auditor's Office to use procurement cards, which is, in my language, a credit card. And it gives us the ability to issue procurement cards to each school and to some of the, many of the administrators, and they can do purchases with this up to certain levels and all of them have a balance or a credit limit. And it helps us keep everything moving through the system rather than having to do purchase orders and having all the signatures and having everything stopped while they're waiting for that. And it's a much more efficient way for people to be able to reach out and buy the supplies they need. So that's what this is saying and this is what the RCW has given us direction to do. So, that's what we're recommending. We haven't had any questions since the workshop, but it's a first reading, so if people have questions, I'd love to hear them so we can bring them back at the next meeting or at least get your answers to your questions before the next meeting.
It's okay.
Only to ask whether the things were striking, they look like matters for procedure rather than policy.
And that's, they're procedures, right.
And I do want to assure the public that this is a heavily audited part of the district and so we keep very good records and make sure Mike is always on top of these things. Don't we, Mike?
Yeah, that's the key.
So no messing around with procurement cards, that's for sure. Okay, good. All right. So unless I hear otherwise, this can come back for a second reading. Next, we have Policy 6213, Travel and Reimbursement of Travel Expenses.
Okay, this is, used to be Policy 5341. The new numbering system puts it at 6213 and it really is about staff travel and reimbursement for travel expenses. The Board delegates its authority to the Superintendent and authorizes the Superintendent or his or her designate to approve requests for professional travel to and from destinations with the states of Washington and Oregon. The Board retains the authority for prior approval of requests for professional travel to and from destinations outside the states of Washington and Oregon. Under usual circumstances, the Board permits the Superintendent to provide preliminary prior approval, which the Superintendent is reticent to do unless there's an emergency that needs to happen. Subsequent approval by the Board is required. Again, this is, it is in alignment with how the state of Washington and RCW has outlined travel for municipal corporations and political subdivisions. The actual and necessary expenses for Board members, staff, students, and agents of the district incurred in the course of performing services for the district, whether within or outside the district, will be reimbursed. Travel reimbursements shall follow travel procedures developed and implemented by the Superintendent. And basically, what we require is everybody to turn in all receipts, including airline stubs, et cetera, so that we can track and when we're audited, we can demonstrate that the travel actually happened and these expenses were actually what the district should incur.
Questions?
So just a point of clarification. So with this, then, I guess travel for staff within Washington or Oregon would not show up on the consent agenda?
Yeah, and that's not new.
Oh, okay.
We can approve at my office, people to travel into any, any part of Washington or Oregon and have for years. We try to put it on your information so you know it's going, but it's normally been approved by me.
I see, okay.
And I sign every one of them.
Right. So I'm fine with that. I just didn't know if there was a change involved.
No, that's, that's been the way it's been for a long time.
The only thing it makes me think of is that there's Pullman, Washington, and it's just a couple miles away from Moscow, Idaho and-
Well, you have to draw limits and the geographic limits of the state is what the state of Washington has drawn for state travel. We've had the state of Oregon simply because of the ability to get into the Portland area or to the Eugene area for the kinds of professional development. A lot of our PBIS training, for instance, has been through the University of Oregon. So getting to Eugene and having that happen has been real convenient without having to wait too long to get approval and stuff.
That's sensible.
And again, it's audited pretty-
Oh, big time.
Okay, so we can bring that back for a second reading then.
All right.
Policy 6216, Certification, Approval and Cancellation of Warrants.
This is a new policy. We haven't had this before. Its legal references are the RCW 28A 330, 080, Payment of Claims and Signing of Warrants. And it basically says, a majority of members of the Board will approve the issuance of all warrants, which is what you do at the Consent Agenda. Expenditure of district monies will be made on the approved vouchers by a warrant signed by the Superintendent, which happens. Warrants to be issued will be recorded with the County Treasurer's Office showing the date, warrant number, payee, and amount, so there's always a documentation and a trail. And warrants which have not been redeemed within a period of 12 months or longer will be canceled by the authority of the Board. So if somebody doesn't cash it or it got lost or something and you see on your Board agendas, oftentimes, we're canceling a check and reissuing it because somebody's lost it or whatever the case may be. But it just puts it in, it gets us in compliance with the law and has it in policy.
Warrants are generally checks.
Not anymore. Warrants are generally not checks. They're normally an electronic transfer to the bank. But far less checks than we used to have, so we're moving almost, as soon as we can, until everything will be electronic.
Just asking for clarification, because when I first saw the word warrants years ago-
You thought they were coming to get you from-
No, not necessarily. I thought it was a technical term and thought it odd, but if it, this is an umbrella term for financial transactions approved, I thought it was important to point that out.
And bills.
Yep.
Okay, then I think we can bring that one for a second reading.
Okay.
Okay, and finally, Policy 6220, Purchasing Bids and Contracts.
This policy is just really changing from 7321 to 6220 and there are no changes in the actual policy itself from what we've currently been doing. And it just is the law on how we have to, how we go out for bids and get contracts approved by the Board. So the only thing we're changing on this is the number.
We have, well, we do have something on the talks about, we're changing from the Superintendent to the Board may waive competitive bidding requirements.
I'm sorry, I missed that up on top.
Second page.
Yeah, second page. Pursuant to RCW 3904280, the Board may waive competitive bidding requirements for purchases that are clearly and legitimately limited to a single source of supply. And we do that at times, but not very seldom because there's more, usually more than one source of supply and then we want to have bids.
Imagine, as audited as everything else, financial.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, well, let's bring this one back for a second reading.
Okay, we'll bring these four back on the 11th of July.
Next up, we have the Presentation of College, Career, and Technical Education's Annual Plan. There she is.
Susan Dixon, our Director of College and Career, Technical Education.
Great. Well, thank you for this opportunity. And as you know, the annual plan is in WAC and there's a requirement that we present every year. It's a great opportunity for us to evaluate our programs and also to look at ways to improve our programs. So the mission hasn't changed since we started our strategic plan in 2010. We did take our 10 goals and in August, we went through a process with all of our staff and revised those goals into six goals. We condensed them and we aligned the essentials for personalized learning. So I think it has a closer fit now with instructional practices of teachers and part of the plan requires that we meet the Carl Perkins, the federal assurances, and this plan has supposedly been under reauthorization many, many times. And there was a bill last year, there was a bill in the spring of this year, Strengthening CTE Act. It passed the House in both situations, but it never has passed out of the Senate. At this point in time, the President's budget proposal cuts $160 million in Perkins, but proposing to put $20 million into National Programs Account and then selected CTE programs in the country that are STEM-focused would have access to that fund. So we're a little concerned about that, but still waiting to see what happens. Part of the requirements are that we meet the CTE program standards and you have those in your packet. And again, that's the industry standards, having an advisory committee, having academic integration with Common Core, next-generation science, having leadership and employability of the School Board approve that. It'll come back to you in August as a Consent Agenda. We also have to address the skills gap in Washington and monitor enrollment opportunities. One of the things we have to do every time we approve a course or reapprove a course, and we have about 95 courses, is we have to demonstrate that there is a labor market. So this is the same as last year, the kind of a high demand, low supply in Southwest Washington. We're still looking at Architecture and Engineering, which is STEM, Computer and Mathematical, which is STEM, Healthcare Practitioners, which is STEM, and then Education and Training, which there are some pieces that fit into STEM as well. So what we do is we annually look at our STEM enrollment and the blue is 2015-16, the 2016-17, and then that is the forecasted numbers for next year. So where our growth is quite a bit is in Computer Science Manufacturing. We just added a new course called Imagine It, Design It, which is an manufacturing course, which we think is going to get more kids interested. Also added Mathematics for Manufacturing, and that is a math option, so that's going pretty well. Growth in Medical, a little growth. So our next steps is, we've been doing a lot of work, K-12, with STEM expansion, and one of the pieces is to really start those STEM academies in the elementary schools. We have a couple of teachers that have really taken the lead, Kelsey Burris and Adam Schmier at Union. And these are just some examples of them working with students at Harmony and then at Columbia Valley. And at Columbia Valley, they're doing a building challenge. So what happens is the high school students that work with these teachers go down to the elementary. They discuss with a teacher what unit they're working on and usually in Science or Math, and then they develop a lesson around that. They go deliver the lesson and then the teacher actually observes the elementary teacher and gives them some feedback that they take back for the next lesson. It's been pretty successful. Another example, Ilhii Elementary, where they're doing Computer Science. And there, and Millplane, where they're doing static electricity. Then, this last year was kind of nice. We started expanding to the north end of the district and we hired a new computer science teacher at Heritage, which is just going gangbusters, and took a lot of his students down to Orchards Elementary and did a whole project on robotics. And as a result of that, they've already started a robotics club at Orchards, which is primarily female. So that was exciting, yes.
That's great.
Yeah, very, very good. So we're trying to expand more of those across the district. You had a lot of criteria in your packet, but we're not going to go through all 10 of those, just a few. So the first one, Standards and Instruction. And again, we have exploratory and preparatory courses. All those preparatory courses either have to lead to a state or nationally recognized credential or provide dual credit. So we gave you a little chart here that shows the dual credit and we've actually increased to 1,263 students that were graduates of 2016 credits. And since 2014, so over two years, we've grown by 78%. Part of that is by expanding to Lower Columbia College and Mount Hood Community College. And next year, we're going to be working on Computer Science- And next year, we're going to be working on computer science, horticulture, multimedia, programming through game design, and welding. We're going to try to add those credits as well, giving kids more opportunities, and also look at some college and the high school programs.
Are these credits for students who are attending at high school and taking a dual credit class?
Correct.
Are these numbers in terms of college credits or high school credits?
College credits.
Oh, quarter credits, I guess, for these three schools, right?
Correct, correct. And we have, I think I counted, about 20 courses that offer the credits. Not the better. We expanded to LCC, Mount Hood, because some programs just aren't offered at Clark College, or in some cases, there was difficulty. Criteria is about occupational skills. So we wanted to show you, and you have this in your packet, but a little bit about worksite learning, because there's kind of four categories. The edge internships are the ones that Cory's helped deliver, Cory Van Brandt, and are usually in a separate period, or they're outside the school day, and you can see the Then you have your embedded worksite learning, which could be like the Teaching Academy. It could be our pharmacy clinicals, our nursing clinicals that happen during the school day, happens in the student store. We've increased that as well. The transition program is working with the special ed students, 21, a little cooperative on the far right is our students that come with paid employment, but they want to have a learning plan so they can... So some of our new partnerships this year, we added Carcher. And Carcher manufactures the large pressure washers. They took on nine interns, and they did quite a nice job of a lean training, actually at Evergreen High School shop, and they hired three of the nine interns. Columbia Machine was a blended internship with Legacy, hired four of the seven interns, although I'm hearing that they may have actually hired the fifth one. Okay, perfect. And then this summer, we're adding two new companies, Office Ally. They're taking on four students in a computer science area. And then Mecase Pacito. And then in the fall, we're working on two more, AbSci Biotech, who recently... molecular labs. So have some great STEM partners coming on board.
They're new, on top of all the other ones that we already have in place that have been...
Right, exactly. So a lot coming on board. We are also encouraging district office people to take on interns. So we took on an intern. We thought if we're encouraging that, we should. So Diana was our intern. She's actually developed our newsletter. She's fabulous at social media and webpages. She's developing our webpage for current technical education, so doing a great job. Want to talk a little bit about our other goals, which is around project-based learning. And here's just an example. Our physics through engineering, which is a ninth-grade option for physics. This is an example of working with a partner. In this case, it was McKenzie Engineering, who actually designed and built the Hudson Building downtown. So they hosted our water tower earthquake competition. And if you look at the bottom, the little shaker down there, actually, you'll like this as well, Rob. The robotics club at Union built that.
I know the young man who built that.
And the cost, if I would have bought one of those, was $30,000.
What was that?
Yes. We looked, we were trying to buy one, $30,000 for a, I don't know what you call it, but it's a shaker. You put the water tower on the top, the tower, they designed the tower, then they have a water container, and they have to design the best water tower, and then they turn this on, and it shakes it, starts out slow, then it moves like an earthquake would.
This was a Union senior by the name of Zach Weber, who was part of the robotics club at Union. What he did was, he took unused VEX robotics components and did a project.
So we really appreciated it. Saved us money, and it was a great learning experience for students.
Awesome.
Zach was the only graduate with an articulating robotic arm on his graduation cap that day.
Yeah, I saw that. That was funny.
He's a very impressive young man, and he's going to go far.
That's great. And then we listed a couple of other partners. WasDOT has hosted us in the collision car reducing force competition. Pearson Air Park and Columbia Machine have both hosted us in the programming course. So again, good partners, good projects for students. Also with our Intro to Computer Programming, they're doing a lot of battle bots. So if you get a chance in the near future, this is kind of interesting to watch. They work over three weeks to build these robots, and then they have a competition. Heritage and at Evergreen. Kids really got into it. Our Pro Start class, so Pro Start is a restaurant class that actually does the front and the back, the chef and the management part of that. And Heritage, they did incredible. They competed against school districts that have been winning every year, and came in third the very first year, so. Business and industry between our advisory committees and people coming in. Everything that we have, there's over 350 partners, and we really just couldn't do this without those partners. We also have some internal partnerships, which are the older, younger programs. You saw a little bit of that with the STEM. This is an example in the left-hand corner of a young lady at Heritage. Second picture off to your right is a child development group working at Heritage. Buddies from the inclusive special ed. On the bottom, we have Mountain View High School, and their... Career guidance, career guidance specialists are incredible in our district. They coordinate so many events, and it's very interesting because it is one piece that is not great, but they do an incredible job, and I know our district always supports. They coordinated over 1,700 mock interviews. Had 68 students go to a hiring event, all that work source. Also, four of the high schools did a big... We had 32 students that participated in that hiring event, which again is STEM-related. All the partners came up and said how well the students were prepared. They did their 30-minute, or 30-second elevator speech, said that Evergreen was really the best prepared. So that's, again, the career guidance people that are doing that. So for accountability, we do a lot of feedback. We give surveys to students every semester, and then that feedback is given back to the teachers, so they can... They'll do that completer report one year out, where we look to see where our students are, and you have all that data in your report. Not going to go through all this, this is very tiny. That's the federal concentrator data. So these are students that have taken two classes at a preparatory level, and that's for language arts, math, technical skill attainment, on time graduation. And we also have in your packets a lot of data on OCR, so we do a big OCR report every year, which is another requirement. Look at our gender in our classes, our special ed, our ELL. Make plans accordingly if we have underrepresented populations in there. Still working on the gender piece, especially with some of our courses. So our goals for next year is to work with more of the agencies outside to streamline events. We have a lot of good companies that want to help us and a lot of organizations, but sometimes trying to streamline that as a counter. Like to bring back teacher externships if we have the funds available. Special ed to expand worksite learning and guidance, and ninth and 10th graders get them started. Partment, we're going to focus a little bit deeper on project-based learning, because we capitalize on. Have one little congratulations here. We have our Teen Parent Program that we work with, and Kim Burke coordinates that program. This teacher in the picture pegged... So I had left it blank because I didn't know how long she had been doing this. Graduated nine students. I know it's a small program, there's usually like 20 students in that program, but it's really meeting a need for both them and their children, who are future, probably, everyone out of the work that they do. That's all I have. 12 minutes? It was checking me.
Oh.
He audited you.
I know, he's auditing all the time.
I just want to thank you for, I mean, you've been working on this for a while.
A while.
And it's...
This is my 17th year.
Really, wow.
Yeah, that's a while. I think the thing that is so fascinating to me, we have amazing CTE programs, and I think it's one of the best-held secrets about what we have going on, because there's often time you hear talk about, "We need to have things where people can go from the school to the workforce, get workforce experience." And we have had such an amazing program, and it just gets better and better every year. And I really commend you for that work, because it is important for our students to have real work experience kinds of things, and to use their regular school training in ways that they can apply that information, and it's meaningful to them. So, and it's, when you read the list of all the different areas, it's amazing, absolutely amazing. I really appreciate it, thank you.
We just have, I have a great leadership team. I have great teachers. Our career guidance people, like I said, are just... I always appreciate your support and...
Gotten better every year, and it was good to begin with. I'm glad to see that. I'm really jazzed about seeing the computer science enrollment numbers jumping, like almost doubling from last year.
Do you see that continuing?
I do. What we actually ended up doing is, we kept getting in some buildings, like only 10 students, kind of a hybrid distance, and got some really engaging teachers to do that, and then just put a hack in the room. Went from like 10 students to over 120 in those two buildings. Because we just had to get it started, sometimes.
The word has to spread. I believe that magic age for computer science is seven or eight. That's when I fell in love with it and never, never let go. And I'm really happy to see the programs expanding into the elementary schools, and I hope it can continue. I'd like to see every kid learn to code by the time they leave elementary. Talk sometime.
Fine.
Oh, yeah, and I just want to say, yeah, CCTE is near and dear to my heart. I mean, last month, I talked to about 100 sophomores at Mount View about career paths, and I talked with a couple of classes of sixth graders at Covington, too, about career choices. I'm just curious, then, maybe about a couple of things, and one is the career choice segment of, maybe this is drilling down, but if you had any comments about the interest in career choices in the business and marketing side, and maybe financial literacy.
So we do have a financial literacy class that's also a third-year math option. Talking about like career choices as in students choosing...
Yeah, I just saw it on the list, career choices one and two.
Oh, okay, okay. So that's actually where we run our internships through, and then we also, it's used in a couple of different ways. It's also a class that just teaches employability skills. So we kind of use it for both those aspects, both the start of our exploration, and at the end with the capstone or the internship.
Yeah, very important.
Employability that I saw coming out of the, just the Columbia internship was really happy, surprising. It was neat to see kids who were interested in so many high-level things have some hope that they could step into something right away and build their career without necessarily having to dive right into college and incur a lot of debt. And, yeah.
Yeah, and I liked the video that the district did on the Carcher internship, showing the students going through the exercises of trying to make manufacturing more efficient. I just thought that was great hands-on skill for the kids.
What's good about a partner, like when we develop these partnerships, and they get the kids, and they get excited, and they want more, they want to continue to do it, we ask the question, you know, all nine students were male. What are your suggestions for how we encourage students? He said, "I have a great idea. Let's bring a group of females. We'll give ongoing tours and show them all the females that are working in our environment in the different areas." So that's a true partnership, when the partner steps forward and says, "Hey, this is how I can help you." Great.
Well, I think about the success we've had with SEH America. I mean, how many kids have we had go through that? And they've hired a large number of them. It's been, what, a couple hundred or so?
No, we've had well over 200 kids go through SEH in the last five years, and they've hired 35% of them. So they're pushing 70 of our kids working there. They even wait at times for a student to graduate, so they can put them to work the next day. And the great process there is if they want to work there and go to college, they pay their tuition while they're working. So the student who maybe doesn't have the resources, or really wants to get into the workforce and still pursue education, we have kids there that go to Clark that they pay for. We also have kids there that are in engineering programs that are going to WSUV. So it's been a real win-win, because the company was looking for a workforce, and they're getting workforce, and our kids are getting great experience. Many of them go to college and aren't interested in that kind of work, but they get turned on to the engineering and the mechanical pieces, and a lot of them pursue that. But the others who are working and getting their college education paid for is a real payoff for kids and families. It's been great.
The other thing, too, I've toured the, at the SEH program and stuff, and I was so impressed with the soft skills training that they get there, that we hear a lot of employers saying, "Gosh, these kids, they just don't even know how to write a memo." And so the fact that they're getting that experience is great. And I just have to say, the way our community businesses have stepped up and are showing, leading the way, so that other businesses will come on board, I mean, they really have taken a high interest in helping us make this such a successful program. It's really quite a model, yeah. Yeah, it is. They're all now trying to outdo each other, I think.
They have to keep up.
Yeah, yeah, so that's great. That's good. Much.
Yeah, thanks, Susan.
Do we have any comments by the audience on this program or this report? Okay, now we have instructional materials adoptions. These are first readings, the first being Family Life and Sexual Health, and it's a digital.
And again, who's talking, Becky or James? I noticed that finger went that way real quick.
James, yes.
Did you play rock, paper, scissors before the meeting about that split?
I don't think she gave him a choice.
No.
So every year, I get to show parent previews of our Human Growth and Development videos, and they're VHS tapes. And they're the same VHS tapes, for the most part, that I watched as a kid in this district in its time. One of the, one of the big issues for us is, just this last spring, or excuse me, a year ago this spring, OSPI adopted a new set of health and fitness standards. And within that set of standards, you know, lots of, lots of information about what kids need to know growing up. We also have state law that requires that any of our sexual health curricula is reviewed by OSPI and the State Department of Health for medical and scientific accuracy. And currently, none of our adopted materials meet that set of criteria. The OSI has understood that we're going through a process. We've actually had a grant through OSPI and through the CDC to work on this, on this curriculum. So the state's recommendation to districts is that they use the Family Life and Sexual Health curriculum, which comes from King County Department of Health. We've got districts around Winlock, White Salmon, Battleground, Ridgefield, Kalama, Woodland, Kelso, Vancouver, and Camas all use... We had groups of teachers, both middle school and elementary, meet to help us identify what are the core, the core lessons that need to be included. Entire curriculum set would take too much instructional time, and so it's narrowed down. So we've had feedback from a number of middle school teachers, from administrators, and then from well over a dozen elementary. So the curriculum is, it's essentially free, the grant has paid the cost. And then we're able to put it online through its learning.
Would a parent, I just thought of this, would a, because parents can review these materials, can they review it from home now? Because before, they'd have to come in to watch the video. We're happy the video's going away too, by the way.
Yeah, we could set that up. It gets currently not broadcast to the public, because we didn't want to give people the wrong impression about something that we've adopted. So we could absolutely distribute it that way. We could also have a setting where people could come into this room and take a look at all of the materials all at once, rather than just sit and watch one video.
And James, you've talked about receiving a lot of feedback. So you take the feedback as been positive?
For the most part, the feedback's been very positive. We've had quite a few parents that have expressed dismay at some of the videos. This one is one of the high flyers in terms of parent feedback. It's the fifth-grade HIV and AIDS video. The sixth-grade one is the other real high flyer, in terms of negative parent feedback. We hear from students frequently that they can still sing the "Just Around the Corner" song.
Now it's going through my head again. Thanks. All you have to do is mention it.
Yeah, you're welcome. So we do have some, some teachers who've expressed concern about that this is still an increase in instructional time over showing the videos that we have now. And we have some teachers that express concern that it might be more parents, more than some parents are comfortable with. And you to have the opt-out process, it's not just good practice, it's also state law that we continue to have.
Is it an opt-out from the entire curriculum, or can they pick and choose?
So, the way it's written in state law is it's an opt-out from HIV and AIDS. That's, it goes back to the AIDS Omnibus Act of... The way it is in practice, and this is in keeping with OSPI's recommendation, is that we let parents choose which parts they want to opt out of.
HIV and AIDS, because I thought that there was an opportunity for parents to opt out of the entire Human Growth and Curriculum, Human Growth and Development curriculum.
So we absolutely offer that, because it's in keeping with good practice. The law specifies HIV and AIDS.
Time for... Gotta go.
What are you gonna do with the tapes?
In many cases...
I'm gonna donate them to you.
I don't have a player anymore.
The VHS tapes are actually degrading to the point where we have to move them between schools, because the tapes aren't functioning anymore, and Marsh Media wants $90 per tape.
Okay.
All right. That's great. Thank you for that. Okay, are you gonna also be our victim on the...
Uh, no.
How much, James?
I was laughing, I was telling James, my 16-year-old and her friends were in the car on Saturday, and I mentioned, we mentioned those tapes, and they had a absolute huge response. It was, "Oh my goodness, I was scarred for life, I still remember," yada, yada. It was, they were thrilled to know something else was coming our way. So I am here for AP French, and we would have brought AP French forward at the same time with all of the other adoptions, except that the review committee couldn't meet until the day after we did our first workshop, or the IMC was meeting. So that's why we're lagging a little behind. This adoption is taking place after it's been more than 10 years since we've had any type of AP French adoption. The AP test has changed since then, which means that we are now using resources that don't align with a, with a test we're trying to help students pass to get college credit for, so it's a, it's a great need. It is a different publisher, a different book than the other language adoptions that we're bringing forward, and that is because the French 1 through 3 does not have a fourth year product. Committee unanimously, I'm sorry, I've been up here too much tonight, I think, had interest in and agreed upon this specific material. It is strong with its online resources, it has great teacher support materials, and it's very flexible. So instead of being lockstep in a curriculum, they're able to make some really great curricular decisions. Kind of a quick overview. Questions, comments?
Oh, we'll bring this forward then for a second.
Yeah, you bet. I believe, and I don't know how you want to do this, but I believe there's people in the audience who would like to talk to the other adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I think that this would be the appropriate time on the agenda to let that happen.
When interested in, okay, could come on forward to the podium. I want to address the board, and we will need your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Sally Plitt, and my address, Siderberg Road. I'm also a 4th grade teacher at Ellehe Elementary. I've been teaching there for, well, not there for 20 years, but in the district for 20 years. And I wanted to talk about the Human Growth and Development switch. That what we have is outdated, and so I can understand why the district is looking to make some... Had some concerns when I was looking over the materials, and I focused primarily on 4th grade, because that's what I would be teaching, but I did look at some of the other grades as well. So one of my concerns is that, as you know, not very many parents opt their kids out of math instruction or writing instruction, but this is one of the areas where it's, it's a sensitive topic, and it can be something that people have strong convictions about and can feel sensitive about. So that is one of the concerns that I have, that I think we have to tread a little bit more cautiously with this. And I was also concerned that, although I know James sent out an email and opened it up for some of the teachers to give feedback, I don't feel like there's been enough awareness that a change is being... My building, there was only one other teacher that I spoke with that had been aware of the fact, and not to say you didn't send it, because you know how emails go. So I think there might have been an email that people didn't really realize, oh, this is what's coming. And so I feel like maybe there hasn't been enough communication around the topic. And one of the people that I went to to talk about it was our school nurse, Nurse Deb. She's been really helpful with presenting the curriculum that we currently have, and so I asked her about it, and she didn't know about it. And when she was asking questions, she went to my principal, and my principal didn't know that this was coming either. And so that kind of got me thinking that not that many people are really aware that this change is taking place. And so that's one of my concerns. I'm really happy with the change of how there's a component to this program that's addressing sexual exploitation, which I think is really an important topic to be talking about in the schools. But I feel like there is going a little bit too much in-depth, it's a little too heavy for 4th graders. And I feel like, you know, I want to be there to lend support and help kids who might be in situations where they need that. But I feel like travesties of sexual exploitation is that the innocence of children is taken away from them. And I feel like kids who are not experiencing that could be, it's, you know, it's kind of heavy for them, and I feel like it could be scary, it could be bringing up some things that are hard for them to deal with. And I don't, I want to maybe simplify that portion of the curriculum. I'd love to see that addressed in a way that is more basic, but allowing kids to know what their rights are, and who they can talk to if they're having concerns without so much example types of details in it. Another thing that was concerning me is there's some references in the curriculum to sexual orientation at the 4th grade level, and I feel like that's kind of a hot topic. And there's, I think that's kind of something that might be concerning to some of the parents, and also not necessary in the, in the, it comes up twice in the 4th grade curriculum, once in the family section, and once in the puberty section. And it's, I feel like it's really very plausible to address the information without going there. And I think that would be a really important thing to consider. Another thing that concerns me is that there are question-and-answer sessions built in to the majority of the sessions, possibly all of them. And I think that can be opening a can of worms, because I think that, you know, in the past, parents have had the ability to preview the curriculum, because it is on video, as old as it might be. They know what their child's gonna see, and they can make an informed decision. And I think that this curriculum being so much more lengthy, and so much more in-depth, and bringing up so many more issues, is going to stir up more conversation, and then having question-and-answer sessions throughout, I think could make the administration of the curriculum inconsistent. It could open up to different biases that, you know, carry from teacher to teacher, and would be harder for parents to know exactly what's going to be taking place in the classroom. So I would opt for, like, addressing how to talk to people when you have questions at the beginning of the curriculum, letting them know that there's an open door, you can talk to your parents, you can talk to the nurse, you can talk to your teacher or another trusted adult, without conducting specific question-and-answer sessions throughout. And my final concern, especially as a teacher in this day and age, is the length, because it's about eight times as long as what we have been doing. And I feel like that's a really huge thing for classroom teachers. And I think I would just really... Some refinements. I mean, I think that our math program that we've put together through the district is proof that we have the capacity in our district to put things together that really meet our needs, without just taking a program that's already been put together, and make it something that we feel, you know, confident about. And although it's a long time, and we might feel like there's a rush to make a change, I think that you guys have been very wise in waiting on changes until things have been a little bit more vetted, and trying to make sure that we're making the best choice. And if we're gonna have this one, as long as we had the last one, it's really important. It's an important decision. So I think that those are some things I'd like you to consider. I know as a teacher, I feel a huge weight. I feel like the parents of the Evergreen School District send their kids to me, and they're entrusting them to me, and I just really think that we can do better than this curriculum as it is. And I also want to say that I'm completely willing to be a part of making a solution, because I know that we do need one, but I don't think this as it is, is the solution for us in Evergreen at this time. Very much.
Sally. Which is more in-depth? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, John, um... Can...
We will, we'll have a conversation about it in Instructional Cabinet Monday, and somebody will reach out to Sally, and we'll make sure that we entertain what she's talked about, and see if there's ways to refine it, or whatever. And we probably won't bring this back for a second reading next time, unless we get to a place where everybody can say, "Yeah, it's time."
Okay, great, perfect.
We, the feedback is appreciated, especially from a classroom teacher who is gonna have to be the person who's standing up there trying to answer those questions, and trying to figure out where the time comes from, from math and ELA, to fit it all in. So those are really critical issues that we want to address.
And it is a sensitive subject with lots of different viewpoints about it, and so we want to make sure we're sure-footed as we move forward with this. So I appreciate the comments and the follow-up on it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on this, either one of these adoptions?
Thanks, Sally.
Righty. Next up, we have the Good News Report. Gail has a parcel of good news for us today.
Good evening. I do have a lot of good news. I'm going to shorten it a bit, though, because we've had a lot of presentations tonight, but there are copies available to read. So with that, I also know that earlier this month, you all spent a number of evenings, afternoons, days at graduations. But I did want to point out another graduation that you probably didn't attend, and that was Leadership Clark County. Some of you there, okay, good. I just wanted to acknowledge that we had three of our Evergreen staff that are graduates of the Class of 2017 LCC, and they're, I think, all three in the audience, aren't they? Here?
Yes, they're all here.
Bill Edelman, Dr. John Stich, and Elizabeth Schalk. So that is a year-long program, as you know, Community Leadership. We have some other folks, including Mr. Perkins.
Did they do that? I was supposed to get an email.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't get the email.
It's official.
Okay. Yep, I'm in the class next year.
Congratulations to them, and you'll enjoy yourself next year. I wanted to call attention to the fact that we had one of nine students in the state, Columbia Valley's 5th grade student, Journey Mon, was inducted into the 2017 AAA School Safety Patrol Hall of Fame. That award also came with a presentation at Seattle Mariner, during a Seattle Mariners game, and she also received a grant from Washington Traffic Safety Commission for $500 to be used by Columbia Valley for school safety patrol equipment. We also just finished up with Rose Festival season. Number of our bands marched in the parade, and I'm pleased to announce that in the Starlight Parade, Union won the Sweepstakes Award, and Evergreen Band won first place in the Out-of-State Open Division. Heritage marched in the Grand Floral Parade, and they won first place in the Out-of-State Open Division with 100 or more members. We also had a number of Evergreen Public School students that were selected as 2017-18 Ready-to-Rise Scholars. Ready-to-Rise identifies and equips, supports, and develops diverse future leaders as they attend one of the Ready-to-Rise affiliate colleges, which are here in the state. That comes with a $500 stipend, plus some mentoring, training, and internship opportunities through their college experience. You know, we've talked a lot about Makerspaces, and I know that people have different ideas about what Makerspaces are. Some people have no idea what Makerspaces are. But there is one up at Cascade Middle School, and you'll see a photo and a description of two of our 8th grade students at Cascade who made summer dresses during their lunch and after school at a Makerspace. At Cascade's Makerspace, they are able to watch YouTube videos and then use sewing machines to make different items of clothing. So you can see two of our 8th grade students modeling the dresses they made during, in the Makerspace at Cascade. And those are something that I think we'll see in more and more schools, and I think each will take a different flavor and interest. Columbia Valley raised more than $17,000 during their annual Navigator Dash, breaking their goal of $15,000. Students run, race, parents and staff support them. The money that they raise will be used to support the The money that they raise will be used to support the school in other activities and then in classroom needs as well. Different way of giving back. Mountain View High School Horticulture students had planted squash seeds early in their year in their greenhouse, and then they transplanted 3,000 squash plants to the 78th Street Heritage Farm. As those grow and are harvested, they will support the Clark County Food Bank. And then, of course, just because I can, and because he's going to glare at me, we're going to call attention to the fact that John Dieter was presented an Award of Merit from the Washington Association of School Administrators, recognized for his effective leadership in public education and his significant contributions to education. I think that's, well, I'm not going to promise that that's the last time that I announce something honoring you. Yes, it is. Okay. My mic is now cut off.
Okay.
That's your good news for this month.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Never tell anybody anything and find out about it from Gail. Now we have on our agenda, he's so excited to be up to the podium, budget update by Mike Morleone.
I know that this meeting's gone on a little long. I was originally intending to show a video about somebody some lessons that they learned.
We've seen it enough.
We've seen that a few times. But I think probably we'll just move forward with the budget report.
We'd like that, moving forward.
You've got the two documents that we share throughout the year. Again, we look at various financial indicators, enrollment drives staffing, and then how did we manage the staffing over the course of the year? And that's a very significant indicator of how we would do financially. So this is our year-end report. You can see we've kind of updated this throughout the year. Enrollment at the end of the day was about 139 students, higher than what we had budgeted for regular education classes. And we were under the staffing allocation provided by approximately 13. I would expect that when we look at this a year from now, we'll be more closely aligned with what we allocate in terms of staffing. But overall, I think I've said every month, it's been a solid year, good year, and would expect that over the next two months, nothing will change. The second document you have gives an estimate of where we think that we're going to be at the end of the year. And what I've been saying for several months now is that we'll be relatively close to break even, maybe a little bit of an increase in the fund balance. And we are at the point in time where there really haven't been any surprises throughout the year. The big question at this point is just a matter of capital renewal, how much work actually gets completed by the end of August and ends up hitting this particular school year. So we still have, the board was presented with a long list of projects earlier in the spring, and they are ongoing or starting here as soon as school gets out, which was today. And so that will be the only variable as we go through the rest of the year. As far as today, it's June 20th. The fiscal year ends for the state June 30th. That's 10 days, and we still have really no idea from the legislature exactly what they're going to do and if they're going to do anything. So you've got a range of potentially having a brand-new system of education to nothing changes and they test the will of the Supreme Court. And so I guess in the next 10 days, we'll get, well, hopefully in the next 10 days, we'll get a sense of what that's going to be. We've been working on the budget and doing all of our staffing based upon our estimates, and we'll just get it rolled out as quickly as we can, as soon as the legislature gives us an idea of what they're doing. That's my update.
Big mystery.
Big mystery.
Yeah.
Frustrating when we have to get a budget out by a certain point, but we don't know how much money we're going to have.
Yeah. Yeah, I think at this point, we're about three weeks away. They've moved it back a week, so I think we theoretically have four weeks to get a budget done. That we have no idea what the parameters are going to be, if they're changing the way we do levies in the state. I mean, there's just all kinds of questions, but that's what we're here for, is to respond to those things.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Next up, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Dieter.
Oh, per se. Oh, I do. What I have to say is there's been a couple of events in the last week that have been more of an honor to me than I deserve, but I want to thank everybody who was a part of putting those together. Victoria, you were amazing as the emcee. Rob and Victoria last night made really nice comments. But more to the point, the people who work in this school district are the people who deserve that recognition. We have wonderful people, and I'm so excited as I decide to make my exit that John has been with us for three years and is taking over, and I believe he's surrounded with some of the finest people at each department level that he could hope to have. So thank you, everybody, but I'm really excited about the future of Evergreen Schools because of the people we have here.
Well...
That's all I have.
It was awesome. Both events were really cool. That first event, just having people from the community who came out and shared their stories, some of which were hysterical. It was really fun to see and... Bit of it. And I want to thank Gail and her department because they can pull a party together, and things were changing, like right up to the last moments, and they were just all over it, and everything went off beautifully. So thank you, Gail, and make sure you let everybody in your department know. It was good, and I think people... Sure, you were out of town. You missed all the good food.
The young people, the students from the Skill Center that put on the food for the one last week at Hila, it was amazing.
I heard there's a lot of music and a lot of cheering for you, John. Is that right?
Seeing a marching band that size in a space that small.
It was so fun.
A little overwhelming to have 160 kids around the room with their horns going. They even had to kick the flag team outside through the windows because there wasn't not enough room for them to be inside.
They didn't have any problem keeping time that day.
No, they were great.
They were very good. It was fun. Super fun. Those cheerleaders, they were... Thank you, John. Board comments? Do we have any comments?
Had a great time at the graduations, as always. It's always exciting to see the culmination of the high school careers for our seniors. And yeah, and by and large, the weather held out, too.
We always have the graduation miracle stops, right when the graduate... ...crack with that scene. It's one of my very favorite times of year is the graduation. Fun, and it's so, you know, we kind of, we see the little ones, kindergartners at the first of the year, coming to school for the first time, and they're so excited. And then you get at the other end with the graduates, and it's kind of a fun thing. And after all these years, I'm still not tired of it. It's...
Graduations, the children's parade, and the first day of school are the three best events of the year, aren't they?
They're super fun. I just wanted to just let you guys know that John, myself, and equity team will be Washington State Leadership Academy or Equity Team that does this. And team.
In Spokane on Friday.
Yeah. What we're up to? Do we have any future agenda items to add to that? That'll become a much more active situation for governments. Now's the time for citizen comments, and I would like, anyone who'd like to address the board? Thank you. That's a couple people on, although Sally's already done hers. Okay. Come up to the podium, address the board, have three minutes, and it may not be personnel or legal in nature. So I have on the list Jack Kerry. Is it Corey or Kerry? Corey. Okay, Jack. Thanks for being here. Come up here, and we've, I've already, we've already got his address on here, so I can give that to you. Okay.
I am an Excel student who recently finished 6th grade at Shaheila Middle School. I went, I passed my Excel test in 1st grade, went to pull out in 2nd grade, and did full-time at Ilahi from 3rd to 5th grade. My two older brothers went through the same elementary programs but went to Shaheila when there was Excel in multiple subjects. Now there is no gifted education in fields other than math at Shaheila Middle School. This is a problem I would like to bring to your attention today. Us start a day in Algebra I, which is fun and engaging. Then three of us go to one block where there's a range from flex kids to Excel students. This is too much. How can, how is a teacher supposed to provide engaging or such a wide range of students? The other three go into a class that is more Excel students but still mixed education levels. I sat through Humanities Being Board for over 200 hours this year because there wasn't advanced enough teaching. Fact, at the beginning of the school year, we were using the signpost of reading, something I had learned in 3rd and 4th grade. My family and I have been emailing you, talking to the principal, my teachers, and emailing the Excel manager and more all year long, but nothing has changed. I know several of you have children who went through the Excel program. Can you imagine how frustrated they would have been without mental stimulation for almost three hours a day? How lonely it is not to be able to talk to anyone about your ideas? All I want to do is learn. In your pledge, you say that you will provide meaningful, engaging work for all students. Say that you believe all students, given the right environment, will learn and excel when provided with authentically engaging work. High standards. I don't know why someone would think it's a good idea to take this program away. It doesn't cost anything. All that requires is reorganization of staff and students. At their same school as well. RCW 28A 1.185.020 states that for highly capable students, access to accelerated learning and enhanced instruction is access to a basic education. This is simply not being provided at Shaheila Middle. I would love to walk into my first core class next year to find my fellow Excel students in our level. Thank you for your time. I would be happy if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate your comments, and we'll be referring this to the person in charge of this program. It's been an ongoing conversation. You are correct. And I know there's some things that you'll like. We cannot get into a major discussion about this because it's not an agenda item, but know that there'll be follow-up on this, okay? And I really thank you for coming and talking to us today.
Thank you, Jack.
Mine, leaving that, so we have it for the record.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Now, the board will go into recess where we will sign documents, and in about 10 minutes or so, we will reconvene for a board workshop where we will have a facilities update, legislative updates, policy development, budget, another budget update, Alternative Learning Education Report, and additional superintendent update. Thank you for being with us tonight.